To start, the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission regular virtual meeting for November 9, starting at again at approximately 7:02. This will also include a public hearing on an application received at our October meeting. So we have the identification of the guests that have joined us also. Now, the seating of alternates. It looks like the only alternate we have here is Doug at this time. So Doug, we will seat you for Nord at this point, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
I don't see and I don't hear Bruce or Tom on the line.
We don't have Jeff Schellinger either.
Yeah, I was looking at the alternates.
Okay.
But yeah, so Jerry, Jeff and Nord are not there. And okay, so having seated the alternates, review of the minutes from our October 13th, 2020 regular meeting. Are there any comments regarding the minutes from last month? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from last month?
Motion made.
That was Richard.
Outset of that.
And Catherine Simpson seconding it. Thank you.
Yep.
There's Jeff. There's Jeff Schellinger. Okay, all those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
All opposed? Looks like we had just about everyone there last time, so. Okay, so moved. Thank you very much. Moving on to the public comment area, we have a number of guests with us today. And again, if you're, if I'll just preface it with, if your comments are in regard to the public hearing coming up, you will have the opportunity to speak at the public hearing. If there's anything else from the Planning and Zoning Commission business that you wish to discuss or talk to us about, please feel free. And there's Jerry DeFrizney, or DeFrain, sorry, I had it written here too. Sorry, Jerry.
You can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great.
That's a good thing.
Hey Jeff, this is Jeff Schellinger. I had a little trouble logging in, but I may know.
He said, we got your name up here, Jeff. Thank you. And excuse me, so. So any public comment from anyone regarding planning and zoning? Count to 13. Okay, hearing none. Thank you. Alex, any bills to receive?
No, we don't.
No bills? And any correspondence that you received?
The only one you have is from the volunteer fire department, which goes with the public hearing.
Right, exactly. And we will share that. I think I sent that out to everyone. Has everyone been able to check their email and see that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, we have another one with from Anthony Paticio. That goes with public hearing also.
Who is on the call and will be sharing that at the public hearing as he has indicated. That being the case, correspondence completed. We're just flying through the agenda here. We'll go to the adjourn to the public hearing. So I am calling together, let's see, we hear beings here. Okay, another guest. Okay. Um, so the public hearing regarding the application, property owner Ashford Realty and Trust LLC with Stephen Rodolaski. And I believe appearing or representing Mr. Rodolaski is Gregory W. McCracken Esquire, who was with us the last meeting to discuss the application. And again, for those of you joining us, I'll briefly go over the application, which is a request to amend the zoning regulations concerning uses allowed and dimensional requirements, most specifically in the Internet Exchange Development Zone of the zoning map and the town of Ashford. There in the application itself, briefly, there is a request to add the, to the permitted uses of the development zone, a number 10 warehouse and freight movement. And to that end, a number of changes and additions to the structure, lot size, lot frontage, side and rear setback table that currently exist in our regulations. And the main course on that includes again, a few changes to the lot frontage, to the side and rear setbacks. And also an addition of structure size of over 250,000 square feet. Again, our previous, our current, excuse me, our current regs go at a maximum of 20,000 square feet, two to 150,000 square feet. And the other is regarding the building height with a request for change from 35 feet to 45 feet.
Jeff, in the description of all this, they didn't, I didn't see a location of this property.
The location of the property, most specifically, is it's a 97 acre parcel and it is, what do we have for, do we have an address or just the area, Michael?
Just, yeah, so the, this is an application for a zone change, so this is to change the text. There is no address in question. The applicant owns property in the town. But this is not project related to a specific project. And so while I have the mic, I just want to include for the record, the legal notice for public hearing was run on October 30th and November 3rd. It was sent via mail and email to the Union Town Clerk based on the location of the zone. And it was also sent to ECOG for review on September 30th. We did not hear back. But we did everything that we need to on our, and it was filed with the town clerk about three weeks ago as required.
And while, thank you for reminding me, Michael. And while Michael's gone through the parameters of how we've warned the meeting, I just want to remind all the members that this application is not a application, again, as Michael has already expressed, not an application for a specific site, nor is it a site plan or anything like that. It's a request to amend our current regulations. So there's no, there's no location, there's no business application, there's nothing like that. It's simply a request to amend what we currently have in the regulations. Again, most pertinent to the Internet, the Interstate Exchange Development Zone, IIDZ. So to that end, I would like to turn it over to Mr. McCracken if he'd like to make any comments or statements regarding the application.
You need to adjourn the meeting to our public hearing.
I thought he did.
Did you do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I must have blinked.
It's okay. Thank you.
All right, are we good?
Keep me honest, Dick. I appreciate it.
Yeah, good evening. Greg McCracken, like I mentioned, I am an attorney at Jacob's Walker, Rice and Berry. And I represent the Ashford Real Estate Trust, which is a property owner. The addresses are listed on page one of the application. Nominally, it's no number and number nine on Ashford Motel Road. So that is the property that the trust owns. Stephen Rodolakis is with me tonight and he is the principal of the company, Ashford Real Estate Trust LLC. So I'm going to start off with this and highlight the application. And Mr. Rodolakis is going to go through some of the more specific points in terms of why he's looking for the application and why he believes that it would be useful or even necessary for the property to be used in view of his history of holding it for quite a few years. So again, as the chairman set out, this isn't an application for a map amendment. The parcels are already zoned for the IID zone. So that part is not going to change tonight. There are no map changes. This is just to the text. Currently, the zoning text actually does have a definition in Article 3 of Warehouse Freight Movement as uses involved in the storage and movement of large quantities of materials or products, indoors and/or outdoors, associated with significant truck and rail traffic. So at some point in the past, the zoning regulations did consider this group of uses. They put in some examples, including freestanding warehouses and distribution centers. And that's kind of the end of it. Currently, none of the zones actually permit this defined use. So it's kind of marooned in the deck or the definitions at this point.
Mr. McCracken, if I could interject, when you refer to the existing land use regulations, go on to the town website. There is a revised land use regulation dated in August of this year. And the definition for this use is, does not give examples. It simply states the bare bones of what it is.
Okay. And it's still excluding the free or including the free or the associated with significant truck and rail traffic and all that, and then it just cuts.
Yes.
Okay, so it is a defined group of uses. Okay, no longer any example. But the point that we're really trying to get here first and foremost is to add this use to a use that's permitted by special permit in the IID zone. There are no issue or uses permitted as of right in that zone. All of them are by special permit only. There's a whole list of them and this would add one more to that list in Section 3 as something that could be done in this particular zone with a special permit. Again, tonight, we're not here to seek one and there's no specific property application that's in front of us. This would just create the opportunity for Mr. Rodolakis or a user down the road to ask for approval of a site plan and a special permit for that type of use. Accompanying this are some changes to the dimensional requirements of buildings associated with that use in the zone. And they pretty much currently slide depending on the anticipated size of the building. Currently, you allow buildings up to 20,000 square feet with side and rear yards that vary in increments of 50 feet for each 5,000 square feet of floor area to a maximum of 100 feet. So at this point, for a 20,000 square foot building, the side and rear yards would be 100 feet in dimension. We're looking to revise them to a maximum of 70 increments of five feet for each additional 1,000 square feet above 5,000. For buildings that are in the size between 20,000 square feet and 250,000 square feet, the side yards currently vary from 100 feet for the smallest building permitted to a maximum of 200 feet in increments of 10 feet for each additional 1,000 square feet of floor area. We're looking to revise them from a minimum of 70 square feet, picking up with the current or the previous building size maximum for the first 20,000 and maximum of 150 square feet in increments of 10 feet for each additional 10,000 square feet of floor area. And then finally, there'd be a new row in that table in Section 4 for buildings in excess of 250 square feet. There'd be a minimum lot size of 25 acres for that size of a building, a minimum frontage of 500 feet. And the side and rear yards at that point would be set at 150 feet. We'd also seek, as the chairman mentioned, a maximum height increase from 35 to 45 feet. The reasons for this ultimately is the warehouse and freight movement are significant uses of land and they're appropriate near an interstate exchange. As it stands right now, interstate or exit 72 is over in the northwest corner of the town. There's a lot of property out there. About the only thing going near the interstate is the Ashford Motel. At the moment, most of it has remained undeveloped. And during the time that the Realty Trust has held this property, there haven't been any viable proposals for it. The road alignments are ideal for truck-related uses of this type. It's possible to get to the property near the interstate using just the off-ramps and state routes and not town roads. The property could be quite close to the interchange. There could be very little truck traffic. It's really one of the best laid out exits on the interstate along 84 anywhere near in the area. So at this point, I think it would help to have Mr. Rodolakis just explain his experience with ownership of this property near that exit and what he anticipates the users would actually need to be able to have a viable project move forward on that land, which so far hasn't been able to happen. And what the impacts of very large yard spaces would be on the use of the land. So I'll give it back to Steve for a minute and pick up again when he's finished.
Yes, good evening. This is Steve Rodolakis. I am the principal of the Ashford Realty Trust LLC. What I'm looking to do here is by way of the tax amendment is to accommodate certain warehouse distribution uses similar to what I have done in the, up in Massachusetts, where sites along the highway like this site, which may have their challenges from infrastructure standpoints, like the lack of water, the lack of sewer, the lack of natural gas. But what, what a site like this does have, as my counsel has just explained, it does have a pretty good network of, of an interchange by the highway. And it's easy on, easy off if you compare it to, say, exit 71 in Wellington or exit 74 up in Union. I think that it would, by rezoning, as it affects my site in the IID zone, it would attract some users which, you know, have thus far, I really haven't had much interest. Initially, I've owned the site over 15 years. I had some interest from some highway business, you know, maybe gas stations, but that was primarily in Union. I also had an interest in a wind farm, but that never really went anywhere. And it was kind of tied to another proposal with the Yale, at the Yale State Forest, the Yale Forest, Yale University Forest, that never went anywhere. So as I see it, the best resource I have for my site is the highway network and the interchange. A lack of butters
Somebody has a radio on.
Is really going to affect. And
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Rodolakis. Excuse me, one moment. If anyone who is not talking, could you please put your microphone on mute, please? Because we have a lot of background and it's interrupting the meeting. So thank you very much for doing that. Go ahead, Mr. Rodolakis.
And just by way of some background, I had just repurposed a site that I had owned up in Oxbridge, which is in southern, south central Massachusetts for similar uses. And akin to what I'm seeking here now by way of the dimensional area, height changes. And at this point, there are three users on that site, well, two and a half, one and a half that are up and running. And the projected annual tax revenue to the town of Oxbridge is $1.3 million. For a site that, you know, the real estate taxes might have been $50,000 or $60,000 prior to the time of the development. So I think that I, what I'm looking to do again is to use the resource that is available, and that is the highway and the favorable design of the intersection. Again, really not much has occurred, or there has not been much interest. I've had Cushman and Wakefield as my broker for 10 or so years. You field calls, but the calls are for uses that really don't maximize what I think is the potential value of this property. And I think that if you brought a user to this site, it would also attract other interests from other parties along that, I don't want to call it a cloverleaf, but along that intersection. And I think that would have the, it would have the effect of increasing values along that 89, 84 interchange, which, you know, is kind of a dark corner or a dark spot in both the towns of Ashford and Union. And one other thing, in terms of height, I know that my counsel, he kind of alluded to it. One of the reasons that I am looking for the increase in height is a lot of these warehouses now have a mezzanine level with robotics that kind of fly over the the area within the warehouse and move things accordingly. And the last user I had wanted this. And it necessitated a zone change at a town meeting in Massachusetts because, you know, 35 feet is, you know, is usually the the height that most of these users wanted. But now with the automation of these warehouses, it kind of necessitates, you know, another level for which to accommodate the robotics and the machinery that is kind of up on the ceiling. So that's, that is why I'm looking for this. I have no specific user at this point. I wish I did. I've had some calls of people looking to do distribution. I think some of them went over the line over into Charlton in Oxford, Massachusetts. So I thought at this point, it would be a good time to bring something like this forward.
All right. Well, thank you, Steve. And just to say too, in terms of the, well, the building height he covered for yard area, there's only so much land that's close to that exchange. And putting very, very large yards around a building can consume an awful lot of raw land without commensurate benefits for the neighboring properties in the character. So the expectation is that rather than have, you know, 200 foot side and rear yards around the building, that during the special permit process, you could consider buffering, design techniques, other things to fit the building into the site better and deal with the externalities of the building on the surrounding properties. Although, as Steve mentioned, there's really not much in the way of a butters around this particular area that's currently zoned that way. In the application, I did point out the, the aspects of the plan of conservation and development or the POCD that are consistent with this application. And there are quite a few points in it that would support this particular concept, at least in terms of what could happen. Certainly, the Interstate Interchange Development Zone focuses on economic development in the northwest corner of town, which is where exit 72 is. And the economic development component of the plan identified that area as a special planning area or SPA for economic development. Two of the objectives of that are increasing the tax base and providing jobs. As Mr. Rodolakis mentioned, this type of development does increase the, the value of the land and adds a valuable building and equipment to the town's tax rolls that can be taxable. There are certainly employees that come in there and provide jobs and create needs for, for goods and services that are out there. The SPA in the plan anticipates greater diversity and security in the tax base in the town while growing opportunities for the development of larger scale industrial businesses and complementary commercial activities compatible with the town's character. This is a very compact area right around the Interstate Exchange, which is good because if it does get developed, its impact on the center of town farther south and the various town roads will not be that great. And the traffic will be more confined just to the, the interstate off-ramps and on-ramps and the state routes in that area, rather than a more diffuse network of the town roads. The plan does recognize the nature of interstate travel and the location of the SPA in that remote corner as being an excellent opportunity for recruiting these kinds of industrial uses with minimal impact of farmland, forests and residential properties in the town interior. So it's pretty much out there in that northwest corner by the, the exit. I mean, businesses that benefit from ease of access to Interstate 84 can provide the type of development that the SPA is looking for and that the town seeks. Certainly, the future land use plan shows that area for commercial and industrial development. And then there's the, the issue that one third of the, the land area in the town is untaxed. And at the same time, Ashford has among the largest network of unimproved town-owned roads in, in the state. So there are a lot of road maintenance expenses. There's a lot of reliance on residential property to meet the town budgets. Demographics are continuing to shift. Growth in Connecticut has been relatively slow over the past years. And the need for good sensible development in the town and a larger grand list would provide some significant benefits to the town, we believe. And this just might be a good use that would fit in that site that currently is not available. So we would believe that allowing warehouse and freight movement in the IID by exit 72 is consistent with the plan. And it's a step in meeting some of the town's challenges in tax revenue and economic development. As Steve mentioned, we anticipate a positive impact on property values, especially around the Interstate Exchange. There's a synergy of economic development that brings in other businesses that can provide goods and services for what's there. Employees that come in may end up looking in town to live there. They'll need places to eat and other things to buy their everyday necessities, hopefully close to where they work. So there's that synergy too. And again, I think the externalities will be minimized just because this is a pretty tight area right around exit 72. Certainly, we can provide more information on the impact of the development on property values if that would be helpful. But what this is right now is just a first step to allow the commission to even consider whether this type of development should happen there. As it stands right now, it's, it's not even a possibility. So it is just a text amendment. Other property owners may seek a rezoning to become part of the IID. But right now, that is not our, our application. And the commission confirmed that Ashford Realty Trust property is currently zoned that way. So this just adds to the uses and changes some of the dimensional requirements to meet the needs of users that could foreseeably build on this property without consuming an undue amount of land in the process. So that's the intention and that finishes where I am at this point. Steve, if you have anything else you want to add, that would be great.
Again, just dovetailing on what you said, Greg, again, Steve Rodolakis is the applicant. I'd rather see more of the area be devoted to building rather than just some facility that moved a bunch of trucks in and out and was, you know, a big field of asphalt. I'd rather, I'd rather see development of larger scale buildings rather than asphalt. So that's, that's why I'm looking for the dimension and area changes.
All right. Well, that, that concludes our presentation of the, the application and an overview. We're happy to answer any questions that the commission may have or staff. Although certainly this is at a conceptual level at this point. As Steve mentioned, there's no specific user in mind. This isn't an application for a specific project. This just creates the possibility that it could even occur. This isn't an application for a specific project. This just creates the possibility that it could even occur.
Jeff, you're muted.
The chairman's muted.
And I keep talking to myself and telling you I'm taking off mute. My fingers aren't working. All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much for that presentation. I'm just trying to think. I know we have a number of members of the public. But first and foremost, I think I'd like to ask the commission, the commissioners, if you have any specific questions based on the presentation that was just given by Mr. Roto-Lakis and Mr. McCracken. If you could share that, and I would ask that you, this is difficult, as your best way, direct your questions to them and allow for any answer. So does anyone have any specific questions for the applicants?
Jerry Dufresne.
Yes, go ahead, Jerry.
With the increase in the height of the building, I'm not sure if our fire equipment has a ladder that would be high enough to do any fire service there if it was ever necessary. Does, I don't know if someone on the board knows the height of our ladder truck.
Well, I could share, since that is pertinent right here and now. I did approach our, after receiving the application, I did approach our fire marshal and fire chief, Richard Whitehouse and Wayne Fletcher. And Mr. Fletcher did come back with a response that we just got this afternoon after I had spoken with him. And I'll read that response. Most of the members have this, and it was scanned to them this afternoon. Dear Commission, dated November ninth, two thousand twenty, Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, dear commission members, recently I was contacted by your chairman, Mr. Silversmith, asking the department's input on an exception to your current regulations in regards to maximum building height and maximum building square footage. As you are aware, the current height restriction is thirty-five feet slash three stories, and the square footage is two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. The department position is as follows. Height restriction is based on the department's laddering capability. Currently, our maximum ladder height is thirty-five feet. Building size restriction is based on our current regs, which is what we're discussing here right now as a, an application to amend. Our concern on building size would be based on several items such as the follows. Usage type, commercial or residential. It's, again, we do not have a site plan or a applicant in that way. It's a change to the regs we're talking about. Whether it's a sprinkled or unsprinkled system, the availability of water supply at the interstate exchange, and based on various usage types, there are certain state fire marshal requirements that come into play. And C, the final point, the current planning and zoning regulations for building height and water supply are adequate and should not be altered at this time. This is the input from the, again, Ashford Volunteer Fire Department, the chief, Wayne Fletcher. So all the members have that. And the only reason I read that now is because Jerry had brought up the issue there. So I wanted to read that and get that into play. Other questions from members of the council? And if you're talking, you're muted. Richard, Mark identified. Go ahead, Mark.
I was looking at lot coverage. So we're looking at building coverage of twenty-five percent and an impervious surface of sixty-five percent. So we're looking at a total of eighty, eighty-five percent coverage allowable for the property of either building impervious surface.
Right. Those are current regs. Correct. No change there.
No changes to that.
Okay, go ahead, Richard.
Yeah, I'd like to reserve my comment till we hear from the public. And we can, I'll do that at the end of our discussion, the public meeting.
Okay, all right. Other commission members, any questions?
Yes.
I got a comment.
Go ahead, Doug.
I think to follow up with Wayne Fletcher's letter, the other thing that we should also think about and consider is on structures this large and commercial operations, there also is the availability on mutual aid from neighboring towns for fire challenges when they get to such large sizes.
Okay, was that, was that the end of your comment?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm just making a point.
No, no, thank you. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Janet.
Yeah, Bellamy, I have a, I have two comments. One is, I have a concern, because we do have a volunteer fire department. If we have a lot of people working, do we have enough, a quick enough response? And also, Mr. Roto-Lakis, you mentioned that you had calls that do not maximize usage of the, of the land. So I don't understand what that means. Could you elaborate on that?
I mean, I don't mean maximize. That's probably a poor way of phrasing my intention or what I intended to express. Meaning that, you know, I don't think a wind farm is, was necessarily the best use of this land here. Would not provide much in the way of return to the town for jobs, tax revenue. The other use is, I think someone had approached me about a racetrack, slot cars or some sort of cars. And again, I don't think that is necessarily the best use of a land like this. I think that when I say maximize the usage, again, it goes back to what I was saying before. When you have a piece of land and the land has some attributes, in this case, this land's best attribute is its proximity to the highway, and it's easy on and easy off. And I think when you look at that, you try to figure out what would be the highest and best use of parcels like this. And that's, that was my intention when I said that.
Jerry Dufresne, I have another question.
Go ahead, Jerry.
He says there's ninety-seven acres. How much of that acreage is in Ashford? Because the Ashford motel kind of is right at the town line. Most of that land, actually, the road going in there is actually in Union.
Correct. There's ninety, I believe there are three parcels or two parcels in the town of Ashford. One is ninety-three acres, and that kind of envelops the Ashford motel as well as goes past it. It continues past it westerly. And the other is a, a house and a couple of acres across the street from the Ashford motel. But it's all in the I I D zone, and obviously, that's a smaller parcel and a large-scale building on that. I think it's like four or five acres. It's just, that couldn't happen.
Yeah. And then there's also a wetland area down below, adjacent to the highway.
Correct. I, that's not my parcel.
Okay.
But I do own twenty-five acres that abuts the ninety-three acres, again, that kind of, again, envelops the Ashford motor in. But that twenty-five acres is in Union.
Thank you. Mr. McCracken, if, I guess I'm going to kick in for a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Roto-Lakis, were you going to say something?
No, I'm all set.
Sorry. So you had discussed property values, improving, increasing. The property value you're talking about, is that of the the acreage we're talking about? The, or what, what property values are you stocking of when you say that?
Well, certainly the acreage, but I think also the property in that area that could serve synergistic uses for goods and services, either by the end-user, employees, people passing through that need those types of goods and services as well. And I see the potential for some effects on all the land in that area that could benefit the values. Certainly, if this is worth pursuing, we could get a more formal evaluation by an appraiser or someone to try to quantify the effect of this type of use on the land in the area. But I would expect a net positive.
If I may, Steve Roto-Lakis is the applicant. I could give you an example that, my experience is that I was telling you about that industrial park that I did in the town of Oxbridge. It's about a hundred and eighty-five acres. And I have my three users there. One is done with construction, one is partially done with construction, and one is just going to start the permitting phase. But on the other, that was one side of the cloverleaf. Diagonally across the cloverleaf, there was an old function hall and that abutted an auto salvage yard. Not exactly the, you know, the best uses for a property along a highway interchange. And just recently, Amazon came in and proposed and just got their permits to build a hundred and fifty million dollar distribution facility. And again, that will add another million dollars in addition to the one-point-two, one-point-three million dollars to the town of Oxbridge's tax rolls. I think it's close to ten percent of their annual budget. I'm not saying this is going to happen here, but I, I, I think that, you know, activity begets activity. And I think you see it other places where you're driving along and all of a sudden you'll see a development, and a year later, you'll see something right nearby. For some reason, you know, although there is talk of development on other, on other exits, this one, again, has kind of been dark. And I think that if you have somebody, if someone comes, I think you'd be surprised what other activity you would get. And when I say surprise, surprised in a good way.
Off the, again, I'm not looking for you to go looking through papers or anything, but off the top of your head, do you happen to know that permitted request by Amazon, what size of that hundred, what size that hundred and fifty million dollar facility is approximately?
Yeah, it was about seven hundred thousand square feet.
Seven hundred thousand. Thank you.
Plus, with a mezzanine level. And that's why I requested the, the additional height, because I knew they needed the additional height for their robotics. I would, I would love to come with, come forward at some point in the future with an application from Amazon if the board would grant the requested changes. But again, I don't have anything like that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have another question. This is Jerry Dufresne.
Yes, Jerry.
How much of this, how much of this building would be in Union? And have they approached Union to change their zoning regulations?
At this point, Steve can address how much is in which side, but I think everything would be in Ashford at this point. And he and I, I don't think it was a year ago, maybe it was. Time, this pandemic is totally throwing me off on any sense of time and place. But we actually did sit down with the Planning and Zoning Commission in Union. It might have been about a year ago. I think the weather was just starting to get cold. But it was, it was a good, useful meeting, and they suggested a couple of ways to approach the development in both towns. But there's no formal application yet with Union.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to give the members some time to think up some other questions as I digest this. I do know we have members of the public here who would like to be heard. And I specifically am going to reach out to someone who sent us a written statement, who's, he's going to be sharing that with us. Tony Patikio, Tony, are you ready and willing to share your comments?
I am. I was not intending to read through that entire statement, but...
That's, that's, that's fine. I actually did share it with the members.
Okay, I mean, that's of record, but I mean, I would like to kind of summarize, I think, in shorter form, what's contained in my comments. And I would like to start by, by going to something that Mr. McCracken said right at the outset, that this is a text change. It's not associated with any application. And that, to me, is the source, one of the greatest sources of my concern. Because what we're being asked to do in Ashford is to fundamentally, I would argue fundamentally, change the nature of this zone by permitting a very significant increase in the amount of, or allowing for by special permit, a very significant increase in the size of development. Because once you get over twenty-five acres, the only limitations on what can be brought in is proposal. And I understand that lot configuration and size of the lot will have certain constraints. But arguably, if you go to twenty-five point one acres, you now can have a building footprint that would cover six and a quarter acres. Now, it won't happen, but, but I was on the T P Z when we adopted, created this zone, and it was very, very carefully crafted. There was months of discussion about what was appropriate size development for Ashford. What could our, our town services support? What could, and in fact, this is our only interstate access into the town of Ashford from I eighty-four. And we view it as a gateway into what is essentially a rural and with a large agricultural presence town. And we did not want to change fundamentally the character of the town. And I think that with the addition of, of the development in over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet without very really thinking about that and what kind of criteria as to maximum building size we would consider is foolhardy. And I understand the applicant's thinking about what he wants to do, but we have to think about what's best for the town of Ashford. And what I view here is a complete revisioning and reconfiguration of this zone to something which has very little bearing upon what we originally conceived it to be. We also very much considered warehouse and freight movement and rejected it because of the, I mean, I don't know what, how you can say that the exit as it's configured now could handle tandem truck, heavy truck load in and out all day of a warehouse facility without having substantial infrastructure changes, which would impact this gateway into the town for the many people who drive on it to get, to get to their homes. And there's very close by adjacent residential areas. And we, I keep hearing about the fact that there's plans to potentially expand this zone and include additional parcels. And until we, until we figure out all of that, I don't think we should be considering changes along, along these lines and along this nature. Now, if Mr. Roto-Lakis has owned this property for fifteen years, and you owned the property when we were going through this process, and, and you know, I, I don't see that by an applicant's amendment to a zone, we ought to be, in effect, revisioning the entire zone. I also think that the justifications, the compatibility with the P O C D were very selective. And I could point to in my, in my statement... And I could point to, and my, and my statement does, points to a number of other provisions in the P O C D. And there's no reference, no citation, no, no even attempt to talk about the purposes for which the zone was set up, which is part of the I I D zone. And make it clear that this is a gateway, it's intended to preserve, it's intended to enhance the, the, the character of the town. And it is, you know, I can read even from the, from the P O C D, although this special planning area is remote from most of the town, is also a gateway into Ashford for people arriving from Interstate 84. Therefore, efforts should be made to preserve the scenic beauty of the area, the natural resources, wet and wetlands, the Maury Pond and the Mount Hope River. Likewise, any economic development should be mindful of these sensitive environmental areas. This is the headwaters area of the Mount Hope River, which serves the, you know, which empties out to the reservoir in Mansfield. It's also and we considered all of these things at the time. I don't think that development that is, that is limited only by the percentage of the lot coverage as to building size and also the 40, the 45 foot height was something which we considered and rejected at that time as well. I view this as something that if we are even going to consider substantial changes to this zone, they should be done in connection with a full scale reevaluation of the entire zone, the purposes, what we want to do, what meets our requirements in the town of Ashford. It's not a developer applicant, but what meets our, our concerns. And I, I just don't feel that this does it. My statement goes into a lot more detail, but I'll leave it at that for my public statement.
I don't want to mute myself, got to stop that. Tony, thank you very much. Thank you. I think you summarized a number of your points in your document. Mr. McCracken, I'll be sure to make a copy of that to make sure it gets to you or have Mike make sure you get a copy of that also.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to make a statement? Loretta, is that your hand up?
Right, okay, yes. I'm the Chair of the Conservation Commission. I underscore three times all of what Tony has said. Because I, I know that when we came up with all these regulations, we were thinking about the, this particularly sensitive area that has a lot of wetlands in it and is the beginning of the Mount Hope River, which is an important river for us and all surrounding towns. So I think that that's number one, a big point. And we were thinking about how the residents have time and time again, whenever we poll them, they say that they're living in Ashford because they like our rural character. They like the fact that there's a lot of trees around and there's a lot of water around and they can fish and do all these things and feel very safe. And so, and obviously we want to have some development too. I mean, I think even though most people sometimes jokingly refer to the Conservation Commission as tree huggers, we do know that we don't have to save every single tree in the town, and that's not our intention. But to look at what are the special characters of each of these areas that we set up? And how we zone them and why we zone them is really important. And we have to look at right down the road from this area is one of the most highly populated areas in our town, Lake Chaffey. And what kind of impact does a lot of industry coming in and the size of that industry have on all the people who live there in terms of noise, in terms of pollution, in terms of abilities to get in and out of their homes and onto the highway and back? So I think that's a big reason why we went through and were very careful when we crafted the regulations and to just open it up to say, okay, we can have whatever can come in. I think that's, that's really not an appropriate way for us to behave as a town. And I think a lot of people in our town would be very upset by that because of the way they feel about the character, the nature, and what we want in our town. And that's not to say that we, we can't have some economic development. We obviously need that, but I think we have to be really careful about what kind of, of businesses we bring in. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. If anyone knows how to use it, and I have just recently learned, there is a raise the hand under the participant section if you want to do that. Otherwise, I'm just looking around because I can't see everyone. I am monitoring the participant section to see if there's anyone with input they wish to give. I see Christine Sebo here. Go right ahead. You just need to unmute. Okay.
Yes, I agree wholeheartedly with Tony and Loretta. The applicant says there's nothing going on except the Ashford motel up there, except for Maury Pond, which is the headwaters, as Loretta said, for the Mount Hope River. And I believe it also feeds Lake Chaffey. And there are significant wetlands up there. Those things are all really important. The applicant says that the impact won't be great to the rest of the town. I think impacting those wetlands would be incredibly great impact to the rest of the town. The applicant says that this is a dark corner. We like dark corners. Those are important. You know, we don't have enough dark corners. This is called the quiet corner. The prospect, you know, it sort of sounded like in, in the beginning, oh, these were just some sort of text changes, adding some height and whatever. And then when the applicant starts talking about an Amazon distribution point, I'm sorry, that is really, really not conducive to a rural atmosphere in Ashford. And I know that's way in the future, but that's the vision and that vision is really an anathema to me. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other input from anyone in the public? Okay, okay, Mike, go ahead. We'll get you, Susan. I see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate your, the opportunity to add some of my thoughts. I had the privilege of serving on the P O C update committee some five, six years ago. And I, obviously, one of the biggest challenges in updating the P O C D was balancing and maintaining the our rural character and balancing that against the opportunity for expanding our tax base to reduce reliance on our residential tax base. Obviously, you know, the, the, the future and where things are in the world. You know, we, we have to look, you know, we have a lot of people that are struggling here in Ashford. Our school systems obviously are, have great needs. So, I mean, we've got to find some way to, to, to help, help ourselves a little bit. And obviously, the interstate interchange development zone offers the opportunity for some development in our most isolated part of towns. You know, it's an area that's basically cut off by 84. Obviously, there's this like the Ashford motel and there may be like, said, maybe a house or two there, but the most part that is cut off. I truly believe that even with this amendment that the applicant is proposing, that there's, there remains quite a bit in our zoning regulations to provide some safeguards for us to make sure that whatever goes there, whatever they might bring forth would be sensitive environmentally and aesthetically to the town. Obviously, anybody coming off that exit sees the highway and what have you. Obviously, you can still build some facilities and things that would, you wouldn't even be able to see really from that exit. And I, and I certainly, no, I served on the Constitution Commission. I'm, I'm wholeheartedly in on, on what makes this town special. But I think, you know, at some point, if we're going to, either, maybe we need to decide to buy that piece of the property from, from Steve so that he doesn't have to worry about it anymore if we truly want to preserve it. But we, I think it's, there remains an opportunity with the way things, developments can take place today and what, how people can and manage all the environmental impacts. Maybe they can provide solar on the roof to, to, to provide an input on, on that changing climate as well. But I think there's, there, I think we have to be open and give, give people some tools to work with. And we still have some say, obviously, we are opening up the door a little bit, but we still have some say relative to what's already in our zoning regulations relative to some requirements of a developer, if they submit a site plan of this size to provide the town with some resources to do all the proper reviews. And, and certainly I, I should share, you know, whether the, we have the capabilities of the fire department. But again, that's something a developer could provide some cost sharing in to mitigate those impacts. So I, I think, I think we've got to allow some things to happen. We still have that opportunity to put up the, the no sign. But I think, I think there's, I think this provides a little bit of opportunity for community partners and try to help, help ourselves a little bit moving forward unless we all want to, you know, pay, keep on paying more taxes to support things that need to get done in this community, to help each other out, help our schools, our kids. So I think, again, I think this, this this amendment, you know, should be considered. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to give my input.
Thank you, Mike. Susan Eastwood, I think you had your hand up.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Susan Eastwood, 178 Waterfall Road. I do live up in that isolated area of town, which I love very dearly. We're right up there next to the Mountain Laurel Preserve that everyone enjoys, which actually backs up onto that road by the motor, Ashford Motor Lodge. I don't know if that actually is your property. Perhaps it is. I, I agree with a lot of what's been said, a lot of good points on both sides, actually. But, but I think that probably Christine, you said a lot of what I wanted to say about the dark skies and how much we really appreciate them. And it's particularly, they're so striking out in our part of town, I have to say. And I, I love that so much. And we've heard a lot of hypotheticals tonight about what might, you know, great things might be there. But I, I remember the wind farm proposal, which, you know, we had different opinions about that as well. But one of the things that I would like to point out is that they promised a lot of taxes for the town as well. And here, Steve, you're, I'm sorry to say this, but you're now saying, oh, that wouldn't have helped the town very much, but this will. So I would like to see a lot more facts about that side of the argument before I, you know, came supported that because right now, I, I think that I do not want to see an exchange that looks anything like 71. I mean, that's a disaster and they're having to now. First of all, the distribution center is failing and they're having to increase all the the exits all along there. If you tried to do that at exit 72, right now, the ramp probably is a little too short when trying to get on the highway from that exit. That's my opinion, but I've gotten run off the road by trucks there a few times. But if you tried to make that longer for trucks, you'd be in the wetlands right there. And, you know, just, that's just one example. On the other side, obviously, there's Maury Pond and the conservation protection that goes all along the back there, along the headwaters of the Mount Hope. So I don't have to say all this again because Loretta and Christine and Tony have said it so well. But as a resident and speaking as a resident, as well as a former member of Planning and Zoning and the Conservation Commission Open Space Committee, I'm very strongly against this change in the regs as it is. And I agree with Tony saying that this is a much larger discussion our town should have, and we should agree on what is right for our town, including the, the services that we have with the fire department and so forth. Very good points that Wayne made as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else looking to speak from the public? I'm looking for hands. Anyone from the commission have any current questions?
Yeah, Jeff, this is Dick.
Okay, go ahead.
For those that are joining us here tonight that have not sat in on the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, we have been in the process of revising the land use regulations. The most recent revisions were adopted via vote by the commission in this past July, if I'm, was it August, this past summer anyhow. We initially took forward to look at the residential agricultural area. And that was prompted by several letters from parties within the town that expressed concern with the way that we treated the amount of acreage that would be required to build a house in the residential agricultural area. We had multiple meetings and we found that our regulations were out of sync with a lot of what was going on in the rest of our surrounding towns in that we required a much greater land area in order to build a house in town, which meant that we'd be building, the most likely place to build would be on farmland. We found that was not acceptable. We changed it over a period of time, working within the commission, what those land use regulations were. We also were concerned about a proposal that was once made for a trash sorting facility at exit 72. And we put in place a, a fee structure for any large development that would happen at exit 72 or anywhere in the town, such that we would have the resources within the town to be able to adequately research what the impact would be on the town. So we originally did not prioritize the interstate area at exit 72 as far as revisions. But our next approaches to make revisions to land use regulations are going to be the commercial and then that area. The technology will probably be behind that. We'll be going through that. And I would say that what is being proposed by you know, Steve and Gregory are good fodder for us to consider as we go forward to make these changes. But without a specific recommendation for use on the table, it's rather difficult to understand how to make these regulations changes in, 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 in the theoretical sense rather than in the absolute sense.
Okay, is that, you're all set, Dick, with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Again, anyone else from the commission? Okay, not hearing anything, and I don't see any hands up. I hope I'm not missing anyone. I'm going to give Mr. McCracken and Mr. Rodelakis, I'm sorry, who's talking?
I did try to raise my hand through Zoom, but maybe it wasn't coming through.
Oh, Luther, I didn't, I didn't toggle down far enough because not many people were. Go right ahead, Luther. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No worries. So Luther Brook, I'm over on the other side of town. I just wanted to say it's, it's great to see all the participation and the discussion. I understand the viewpoints of everyone that has concern in this. And I, I think it's great that we're all coming together to talk about it. I would encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission, if they decide to pursue discussion and consultation further on this application to, you know, make it a, a bit of a, as has been said, community discussion, including not just the public, but you know, the Conservation Commission, any of the other inland wetland agencies, any of the other potentially concerned local experts and get their advice and opinion and you know, make it a very thorough, well-rounded discussion. I'm sure economic development would, would have some information that they'd want to bring to the table. So yeah, I'm just, I'm very encouraged to see all the discussion and thanks for hosting it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Luther. Thank you for the input. Before I make any assumptions, I just want to be sure, have I missed anyone? Does anyone have any other comment? Gone through all of the names. I don't see hand up in the group. I will give Mr. McCracken and Mr. Rodelakis, any other comments they wish to make based on some of the comments they heard?
Certainly, I'll, I'll lead off and let Steve finish this, but I, I really do appreciate the, the well-considered and thoughtful comments. This is really been one of the best public sessions I've seen on, on input for a text amendment in a very long time. And it's, it's wonderful just to have the concern and to bring the issues to the fore and, and consider them in a really, you know, civil and appropriate way. This is really been
Don't be surprised. We're good people.
Oh, I, I'm impressed. Yeah, part of, you know, I, I actually have a master's Durbin planning and, you know, one of the difficulties with planning is that if you only plan for the fate of an area, but you never have any means of getting there, the plan just kind of sits and it's an unrealized dream. And I, I know that exit 72 has great value to the town and And I, I know that exit 72 has great value to the town and, and also to Ashford Realty Trust. And it's just a question of trying to figure out a way to do this in which there are some means to implement the vision that everybody has for that spot, without structuring it in a way that there'll just never be any resources or opportunities to get there in a perfect way. I just would hate for the, you know, the, great to be the enemy of the good. And we, we laid out what we think is a possibility for some uses that could make, I think, appropriate development of the land around there. It's certainly possible to protect the environmental resources, even as we proposed it, the yard sizes are quite large and there's still buffering and all kinds of other things that could be done. The wetlands are pretty much untouched these days, even in upland review areas, there tends not to be much construction in most projects. So I think there are ways to, to structure this so that the environmental impact would be minimal. Even on wells and septic systems, you can come up with a process in which the water that comes out is, is near drinking water quality. It's, it's possible. So it's just a question of, you know, when the, the time comes, structuring the project for the site and, and try to make the most of, of the opportunity to develop that land. Again, there aren't any specific ones now, so we're just hoping for an opening to be able to propose something and then consider the impacts at the next stage, which is by site plan and special permit. But, but for now, we, we just think that for the site and its location, this is worth considering and we're asking for that opening. And, and certainly the commission has the leeway to look at the dimensional requirements and decide whether the numbers are appropriate and maybe to strike a balance somewhere in between what we're looking for and where things are. But a-again, it's a legislative decision. The ultimate decision is in the commission's hands. And again, we're just asking for an opening that would allow a viable project, the opportunity to come as an application and be considered for site plan and special permit approval. So I really do appreciate the time everybody has spent tonight and for staff's consideration and everything. And, and really, this has been a, a, a great opportunity and I, I appreciate it. And Steve, do you want to wrap up with anything?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I have served up here in Massachusetts on my planning board for over 21 years. And, you know, what I see is that, or my belief is that your zoning bylaw has got to be a living, breathing document. And you can't, you write things that, you know, 10 or 15 years ago and they don't necessarily meet the demands of, of, of the current marketplace. So I, I, I think that there has to be some flexibility. But again, I, I'm not looking to do anything as of right. Everything I would be looking to do, you condition it on a special permit, which you have the discretion to deny. I'm just trying to be ready for when there is a good user. I'm not trying to burden the town of Ashford with something they don't want. If it's something you don't want, I, I'd come for a special permit, you'd deny me. But just one other thing I just want to mention, going back to the Maury Pond, I own that 11 acres on the Maury Pond. And I had a proposal a couple of years ago where I wanted to swap some land on the state forest. And I met with Deep and I offered to give them that land and they didn't want it. So I, I appreciate that everybody wants to protect the, the water resources in, in the Maury Pond. But I don't think that anything that, this, there is no proposal. Anything that we'd be looking to do here could be built in such a way with the appropriate storm, stormwater drainage, appropriate wells, appropriate septics, et cetera, that it, it would not affect that resource. And I think from an engineering standpoint, that could be demonstrated. But again, I, I don't have a specific proposal. I wish I did. All I'm looking for is, is an opportunity to attract users. And if the town didn't like them, they could shoot it down. But the current bylaw just doesn't work. I, I don't think that there has been no user who has approached me that would fit within the constraints of your current bylaw. The only thing that, that I, that I had, that the Realty Trust had was a wind farm that would go to the siting commission, which would override your zoning. I'm not looking to do that. I'm looking to work with, within your bylaw as, you know, as I'm seeking to amend it. But again, but giving you, giving the, the commission the discretion to deny condition, any proposal that comes forward. And again, I don't have one. I wish I did. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. I don't see any further input from public or commission members.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
So just a, a, a couple of notes, because I, I did, I did get a call from a resident who just had a question, didn't give me their name. But maybe, because we've had a number of people that are attending but haven't spoken, so just the.
This is like a bid remotely at an auction. Okay, go ahead.
So just to be clear, the, and I know you went over it, but the text amendment isn't to facilitate all of this from scratch. One of the compute, points of confusion from the person who called me was, are we hashing this out fresh? And we're not. They, these uses, the, the zone already exists. These structures can be built. There are permitted uses, which are listed in Article 4D for this zone. So to anyone who's listening who has confusion, we're, the commission is not debating whether or not de- development should be allowed, period, which I think has been clear, but I just want to kind of lay that out there based on that, that phone call I got. The other thing that I just want to put out there is if there's anyone on the commission who feels like there are questions that have been asked, that they haven't been answered and they're looking for better answers, such as firefighting or other things, then you all should have a discussion about what to do with the hearing, because if we close it tonight, the applicant can't provide you any more information. So the only thing you can do is discuss, but questions to him or other members of the, of, of, you know, fire department, fire chief has to, we've got it, we'd have to stop that here. So I just want to make clear that if anybody has questions or things they want followed up on, you either give me homework or you give Mr. McCracken homework. So we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Actually, since you did bring that up, Mike, and, you know, I had the question similar to, I think Susan Eastwood also was looking toward the information regarding such development and the property values. Is that something that you, I believe you said you might be able to provide something along those lines, Mr. McCracken?
I think that, yes, Steve and I should be able to put our heads together and come up with a good source for that and provide you some more detailed factual information to consider. So, yes.
So if that were the case, then I'd like to make a recommendation to continue the hearing at this point. If we have agreement from the applicant.
Yes, we agree. The other thing that I can do is I can work with and see if there's any information that our assessor would be willing to provide, because she will obviously be involved and, and she may have something. So if there's anything fruitful that she has, I can, I can talk with her.
That would be excellent. Okay, very good. Any other requests from the commission of, for, for any further information that wasn't shared?
This is.
Go ahead, Janet. Excuse me. One second, Christine.
Oh, sorry about that. As long as we're asking questions, perhaps we could ask the fire chief, what would be needed if we, if we, if we passed it and somebody built one of these large facilities? I, I know we don't have the ladder, but do we need a whole new truck? Can we, you know, what, what kind of investment is the town going to have to make if, if something large is built?
That's, it's, it's a good question. It's somewhat subjective only because, again, part of what the fire chief identified was the nature. Again, we don't know what the business might be that's in there and what the requirements would be sprinkled, unsprinkled, cistern. There's not, you know, we don't know what the accessibility of water supply is up there and all. However, it would allow some input from, in a general standpoint, the state fire marshal requirements, as we alluded to in Wayne's letter to us.
Yeah, well, and I'd also like to know what it would cost if, if a 45-foot tall building was built. What kind of equipment would we have to purchase?
Oh, understood, understood. Yes, you know, as part of that, as part of that overall request from the fire department. Sure.
Yeah, Jeff, weighing in on that, we may recall with Dollar General that there was concern about adequate water. It should there be a fire there. And at the expense of Donald Dollar General, they put in a cistern at their expense to assure there was adequate water supply. Should there be an actual application? One of the things we could address is that if indeed this building is going to be 45 versus 35 foot tall, it would require additional firefighting apparatus. Part of the condition of the permit would be that the applicant provide the cost of that firefight apparatus. So those things could all be handled in a special permit. Right now, we have hypotheticals. We don't have real applications and that's the, the thing we need to deal with.
Right, but it would be good to know, like, as, if we scaled it, you know, if we looked at 300,000, 400,000, 500,000 square foot facility, are there, are there increasing requirements based on, again, state fire marshal laws and things like that?
And I go back to the special permit that we just recently passed. It says, and I don't know the value of what this would be, but if it is considerable value, that would require a escrow of $50,000 or 2% of the value of the proposed development. And that could be used by Ashford to evaluate what should be done and not done relative to this application.
Right, right. We, we have that in place to help us with making a valid and solid decision. Thank you, Dick. Okay, Christine, yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I'd like to see input from wetlands. I'd like to see input from them considering how an expansion of the building size and the resources needed to support those buildings would impact the wetlands around it and the Mount Hope River and potentially Lake Chaffey. So I, I think wetlands needs to be involved in this.
Okay.
And also in terms of, you know, things like runoff, you know? I mean, you're paving over a lot of land and what, what, what happens to all that runoff? Does that impact the wetlands and the Mount Hope River and Lake Chaffey? So I, I just think wetlands needs to be involved here. There, it's, it's an extensive wetlands area. And that's what you see from the highway. Is that beautiful lake?
Uh, Susan?
Oh, yeah. Well, I actually, you made me think of something else, Christine. Sorry. But, yeah, I, I just wanted to add that, that wetlands goes down, that water supply reaches all the way to the sound. Don't forget. So, and I think Christine knows that very well, but I was, wanted to just sort of ask Mr. Riddelakas something about the, the land around Maury Pond that you, you said you wanted to give to Deep. My understanding of that, I worked on the legislation about the Haddam land swap and my, that had already been passed, that, so it wasn't allowed. My understanding, you wanted to swap the land as part of the wind farm deal. Is that incorrect? Because that's what I read.
That's correct.
Yeah. So it was legislated against. That is why Deep said no, it was not allowed by law anymore to swap land like that for state land. I'm sorry.
You, you won't let me answer the question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So a- at that point, it, it hadn't been legislated. My understanding was it hadn't been legislated against. It might have been politically unpopular, which, which is a distinction with a difference. But it had not been legislated against. Deep was just reluctant to do it because of the controversy surrounding the Haddam land swap. I met with Selletman Fletcher, Senator Guglielmo, and representatives of Deep at the State House. Then we went down to New Britain and, and met with them. And it was all about politics. It, it, in my opinion, it, it would have been good. I, I was going to give all the land back at the end of the 30-year lease with the, that Yale collaborative of the wind farm. The intention was the existing land in Ashford and Union, as well as the 12 acres. The 12 acres I was going to give outright, right, right from the get-go. But the rest was going to revert back to the state or the town. It might, might have been the state forest at, at the end of the 30-year lease with the wind farm. And, and, you know, there, there was some support for that project at the local level. I think the Selletman all supported it. I think the, the legislative delegation supported it, but it didn't happen. So it's.
Yeah, well, actually, I do, I do appreciate your intentions there. I did support it, actually. My understanding was that it wasn't possible anymore. So excuse me if I got the dates wrong. Anyway, so I just wondered.
No offense taken.
If you would be thinking about that as an open space contribution to the town, if you were to develop that land in the future.
I would love, I would commit to doing that if you could move the town line, because I believe that property is in Union.
Well, I don't think, never mind. I just was wondering, you know, because there will be open space discussions if there's development up there.
You know what? If, if, if I get a user and we can do that, I, I would put, I would consider putting a conservation easement on that property that would run for the benefit of the inhabitants of the county of Union or the inhabitants of the state of Connecticut, or however you do it in Connecticut.
Well, thank you. I, I know that's a little off topic, but I do appreciate your answering the question for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, I see your hand up.
Thanks, Jeff. I, I just wanted to ask or urge the commission in looking at, at, at this, that, that before adding a warehouse distribution center, which, which I know we spent a lot of time thinking about at the time. And it may be, but I would urge that, to take a very close look at that and the impacts it could have on that interchange and, and whether the exit would have to be reconfigured and how that might impact people coming into town just to get to their homes. Also, I think, I, I, and I think I probably said this, but I just, I would also urge, urge the commission, as you're looking at any development in this zone on parcels larger than 25 acres, that I think we do need to have some consideration in addition to just the, the lot coverage of maximum-sized buildings that would be appropriate on different-sized parcels within, that developed within that. Because I think that, I think you were already talking about, you know, it, it changes the level of services. But, but I think that, that's one thing that's very lacking in this proposed amendment. It just says, once you're over 25 acres, it's just subject to the 2560 requirement. No idea, no limitation on the size of the building. And, and I think we need to at least think about that. You know, what, what's, what is the maximum amount of development that we think is sustainable in this, in this area? And how do we want to allocate it within the zone? I think that's an appropriate consideration.
Okay, very good. Yeah. And also just the, even the structure size. I mean, to give people, some of the commission members some sense of what this is, that a building of 25,000 square feet effectively holds four football fields. Plus, if, if football is your game, I mean, that's, that's one way of, you know, viewing something of this size, which is, again, that addition to the table or chart of anything over 250,000 square feet. So again, if, whatever helps you to wrap your head around it. Okay, yes, Christine, again.
Maybe some good examples would be the examples that the applicant has talked about in, I think, Exbridge, whatever, some other property he owns. What does it really look like? What do those big monster interchanges look like now? Have a photographer go out and take pictures.
They, they haven't changed much. One is a, and I can get you pictures. I, I may be able to get you some drone footage of when one. When one building, the Medline Building, went up. The other one is a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot marijuana grow facility. I know, I don't think in Connecticut you have.
Not yet.
But that's that's one of the other uses.
But that's that's kind of the size building we're talking about. So maybe maybe a drone drone footage of that kind of place would be important to see.
Yeah, maybe maybe the marijuana would be a good agricultural use for that area.
Dick, I thought you were going to say road trip. I'm sorry. Okay. Anything else? I see no hands. Most people have had the opportunity to talk a couple of times. So to that end, we are not closing the hearing. We are continuing the hearing. We've asked for some information to be provided. Mike, you'll be able to work with them on timeframes and things like that.
Yeah, you you have. Enough time to get it to the next meeting and. So I don't think there'll be any issues with taking care of that.
Next regular scheduled meeting. Okay, very good. So with that, we will move from the continued hearing. To our regular meeting. I want to thank Mr. McCracken and Mr. Rodolakis. I have a tough time with that name. It gets stuck on my tongue. But thank you for coming in and presenting to us. I want to thank all the members of the community that came in, especially if you came in specifically for the hearing. You are more than welcome to stay, obviously, should you wish to, but we will be moving back into our regular meeting for the planning and zoning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie, you doing okay?
Well, I am. I'm on I'm on page seven, almost ready for page eight.
We'll have to have you have a send you to a book binder for this to get the everything put together. Okay, so resuming the regular meeting of planning and zoning for November ninth. Item number eight, it is unfinished business. We'll have, we can have some discussion on the amendment application. Is there anything that? Has come to mind for anyone? Hey, Tom, I can see your picture now. I knew you were here, but now I can see your picture. And any comment from the commission members regarding? The information we just received.
Oh, um, I.
Janet, go ahead.
Get my, I have to get my thoughts together. I I totally agree that we should. Revisit the whole section before we make any changes. And not just add something to it. We can study it and have a vision of what we want and get more information.
Yeah, Jeff, I would echo what Janet's saying. I'd said previously in the public hearing that, you know, we had several letters concerning the. Regulations for residential agricultural that dealt with the size of the. Lot size as a result of what we had in in the regulations. I have had a chance to sit down and look at in detail at both the commercial and the exit seventy two. Sections, and I can see things that beyond what they're talking about that should be revisited. I think it's better to look at the whole thing as an entity rather than their specific items that they're asking that we change.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else? Input, thoughts, questions, concerns? So. I guess I guess some of the things that come to mind for me is what we're trying to do here is be both. Stewards and cognizant of the rural. Character, the rural nature of Ashford, everything that's been identified in P O C D. And what we continue to strive for. Along with. Some of the. The needs of the town, obviously. I mean, anyone shakes a million dollars at you, it's kind of hard to resist. But again, there's nothing, there's nothing in stone on that. There's nothing that is on the table for that right now. It simply makes this area more attractive to more potential buyers for Mr. Rodolakis. I'm sorry, Dick, I just want to say, but again, we do have the opportunity, as was stated, under the special permitting process to control. The control the role, if you will, control how people. Apply, what they apply for, what we're looking for, what will make this so it fits with our community. In the long run, but I. I appreciate the fact about people wanting to revisit the section. Luckily, it's a short section. Much shorter than what we had to work with before. And we probably can do that. And I'm just wondering if, as Mr. McCracken said, are there? Compromises that can be made, not. Not just a carp launched over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet and twenty five acres. More of a controlled nature. Or even identifying, I mean, again, it's hard for me to fathom something seven hundred thousand square feet going in and what that really means. So and what the impact is, you know, maybe it's something we need to look at from a standpoint. With working with NICOG and gaining some information there as to, you know, what the impact is for the town.
Yeah, Jeff, I did a quick look at the property cards in Wellington for FedEx.
Which which I've come to find out is a three hundred to three hundred and twenty thousand square foot facility, just to let you know.
Yeah, and the and the value was, one of them was twenty five million and the other one was nineteen million. Maybe Mike can give me some numbers, but I I had seen. And the call that I made to some of the Wellington officials that the value of that facility alone. In Wellington is like ten percent of the tax base. Is that close to right, Mike?
Yeah, so the Wellington facility, the FedEx facility there, I believe. The main building is just under two hundred thousand square feet. They pay for property tax just over half a million bucks. That's the tax bill to the town. I don't know as far as the fleet, what's there, so what the town gets as far as personal property, because that's taxed separately, but the real estate bill. Within the last, either the twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen was about five hundred and twenty six thousand dollars.
So, you know, it is, and and by the way, all of us is driven by that exit. You can't even see it. It's just a a road with a sign. You don't see anything there. So with all the. Properties that we have at exit seventy two, you could build something that you'd never see from the road. And and anything that we do there is going to have to go through a special permit process and we're going to have to to study it in detail. Looking at this as something as a hypothetical. Is really not a good way to to do things. I think it's better that we look at the whole thing as its entity, as Janet had said. But I think the potential for this impacting our tax base in town is substantial. And if you go back to the P O C D, the first objective under this S P A. Is to come up with a plan of what should go there. We've had a lot of things on our plate these these past couple of years, and that has not been attacked aggressively. There's been more focus on the West Ashford and Warrenville areas. But it would not take a lot of energy to look at this area in more detail.
So if I could just jump in really quick, because you guys, I think, are going to have to kind of think about what direction you want to go. I think that the applicant is going to be looking for some direction either way from you on what you want to do. I I think you owe it to him. And maybe this is my perspective and you can tell me to turn my camera off and go away. But, you know, he. We don't want to tell him. We think this might work, but we want to look at the whole section, so we're going to deny this and then, you know, you've got to kind of. Have a thought in your mind on on what you want to do with his proposal. And if the answer is we want to make more wholesale tweaks, then maybe what you do is have a conversation and and his application morphs into something that's more. Widespread. There are other other regulatory. Options available to you beyond the special permit approach. You can have a floating zone. You can have a special development district, which requires a master plan. So that the applicant would, if it's a high level of development, the applicant comes in with a basically a map change. To land that floating zone on the property and then that opens up another level of development. So perhaps this is too extreme and and you guys are looking for another layer of review, though you have that through the special permit process, but. You know, I just want to make sure that if there are. And he's not here listening, but if there are potential changes to the application that he should make. Because perhaps you feel this is too narrow and the scope isn't appropriate, that I communicate that to the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
One of the things I would. Raise when we're talking about permitted uses. The interstate area basically says. The special permitted uses include everything within the commercial usages. And within the commercial usages, we have one of the permitted usages of. Wholesale and distribution. So it's close to, but not exactly the same as what they're asking for. So I mean. But I still am, without a specific application in front of us. I I don't think that it is wise for us to act unilaterally on this, you know, in the hypothetical. My my opinion.
I would, I would agree with Dick that. If I had to vote on this now, I I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving it. We don't, we just have. To need more, we need more information and I think. We've had a lot of good discussion from the public about problems with it.
Yeah, and and Janet, if we had a specific proposal in front of us. Then all of the issues with respect to. You know, wastewater management and all of the issues that would be associated with Maury Pond and the headwaters and the like. Could be thoroughly vetted in a technical fashion. But to to do this without that kind of information is, I think, premature.
Well, again, what what I think, what the applicant, when you boil it down, you know, and I know everyone's kind of playing nice, nice here. When you boil it down, what the applicant is trying to do is. Move a property that they've had for fifteen years. That. Has. Had limited. Requests, limited action on it and trying to make it more attractive to a larger pool of buyers. And what they're finding is that, again, whether it's dated, whether it needs updating, which I think we we have agreed, we need to take another look at it. That zone does not meet the. The needs for large scale activity that they're looking for or a larger scale activity from potential buyers. And I can hear most of the, a number of the commission members, you know, of a mind that. To move forward on this would be somewhat premature. We're not, I mean, a buyer is not going to show up all of a sudden and give us an application that we can act on or. Put through the special permit process or anything like that. We. I think I think moving forward, I I tend to be in agreement with what Janet and Dick are saying. I really like to hear what some of the other commission members feel about this activity, about what we're looking at.
Hey, Jeff, I'd like to make a comment if I can.
Absolutely, Jeff.
I I'd just like to urge all of the other commission members to take a ride down to exit seventy one. And take a look at the impact that a three hundred and fifty thousand square foot facility with a lot of truck traffic has had on that area. And and think about if they want that up at exit seventy two, which is the only other gateway into the town. I can remember moving up here when there was no traffic on those ramps and there was nothing but a farm up there. And I go by there every day now and I look and see what's there, the litter, the garbage, the truck traffic. And just, you know, take a look and see if that's what you want in our other gateway into the town.
In addition to the FedEx, there's the truck stop, which is just down the road a few hundred yards. Which is considerable truck traffic.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else? Alex, you're talking, we can't hear you.
How's that? Okay, the traffic is not just going to be on the on eighty four, it's going to be on Route eighty nine, it's going to be on all the side roads. We have to take that into, you know, think about it, because if you look over by the truck stop. All the side roads, like on three twenty, it all the traffic is heavy there now, too. So if we build a big building on that section, the traffic is going to be coming right down eighty nine. To forty four to go to Providence. You got to think about that also. Traffic is going to be a heavy duty all around there.
Yeah, we're getting problems with, what is it, GPS and Google Maps and stuffs going down Westford Hill? Because that's where they direct them to, to go east or to go to Yukon or head to Providence.
Right.
Yes. Actually, a short time, a short time ago, they, there was a trailer truck going down Oaks Road.
Oh, my God.
A tandem, a tandem trailer truck went down Oaks Road. Which if other people in town, I don't know, Oaks Road is a dirt road.
Yeah, with a small, very, a small bridge section also.
And that's really, that's really where the special permit comes in. Doing the traffic studies and then make it a condition that they don't do that. We do have already a lot of traffic that's coming from Hartford. Going out to the trash plant in. Can't think of the right names of town, but we've got these.
No, Lomantic?
Putnam, Putnam.
Putnam, that's right, Putnam.
We've got these trash trucks coming through town and they stop at Cumberland Farms to get a coffee, park right in the middle of the road. There's, it it just, I don't know how many per day, but there are many, many per day. But that's doesn't come up relatively anything we can do think about. But if someone's going to build something, we can make it a condition of their permit that they can't do that kind of thing. So I mean. You know, it's it's a, it's a catch twenty two, you know, you. At some point in time, you've got to permit something to happen there. I I I look at the FedEx facility in Wellington and you can't even see it. It doesn't exist on as far as anything you can see from the highway. It does have a lot of traffic. As does, I think there's more traffic with the TA truck stop than there is with the FedEx facility. But and I drive through that frequently. I drive through exit seventy two frequently. It's 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 also my gateway to, you know, driving home, because I live just a quarter of a mile from Susan. So, you know, we we see this the same same area, but at some point, you know. I go back to the point that we really don't have a specific. Application in front of us. We have a hypothetical. And I don't think we ought to respond to a hypothetical.
So two things that I would just note, because you guys have been talking about them. Number one, you may have heard that Wellington had another truck stop approved within the last year and. The the engineering was done on that site and none of the on. none of the on-ramps and off-ramps were required to be upgraded at all based on the truck traffic. They were all deemed to be adequate by the DOT and that was all required as part of their approval. The other thing that I, I just want to mention and I'm, and I'm not pushing back on it, on it at all, but I just want to make it clear. You know, some guy, some of you have expressed concern over, you know, like what Dick had just mentioned about the hypothetical. He can't provide you with anything beyond where we are now because the existing regs don't work. So he can't give you a concept, he can't give you a preliminary draft or a site plan because what he wants to build doesn't, it doesn't work. He can't draw his project on paper. So you kind of have to, to some extent, consider the hypothetical because the hypothetical allows the regs to facilitate what he wants. So if there's something that you need or would make you more comfortable making a decision either way, let me know and I will let Greg know, but a site plan that shows where the building would go and what the parking would look like and what buffering would be required and you know, those types of things. Anecdote, you know, I'm, I work in another town, we just approved a 150,000 square foot build, two 150,000 square foot buildings on the site. They're providing 15-foot berms. But I can't show that to you for this because we don't have that yet. So you, you are going to have to consider the text at hand and decide if you think it makes sense to make those changes. And if the answer is yes, then all those things you're looking for will come as step two. But unfortunately, he's not in a position to be able to do anything beyond this conception, this hypothetical scenario because he has to change the text, which I know is hard, but I just want to, I don't want him to lose points for not being able to provide you with something concrete because he can't yet.
No, that's not being held against him, I don't think in any way. Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, Mike, has Wellington approved the Love Truck Stop?
Yes.
Okay, because that was up in the air last time I checked.
Yep, that was, that was the site I was referring to as far as the, the truck traffic and the ramps that, that was done. And a lot of the things you talked about as far as the site plan stuff, we, we had issues with trucks that may be going north into Stafford, so we had the plans redesigned so that they couldn't make left-hand turns and we went through all of that. But the text amendment is just that preliminary step and so all those tangible details aren't something that he can provide to you yet.
Well, and, and that would, that would beg the thing, there's no way in hell that you're going to have a TA truck stop and a Love Truck Stop, you know, one exit down. So none, none of that's going to come to, you know, to Ashford. So the only thing that's possible to Ashford could possibly be a distribution shut up.
And, and I can tell you, we're getting, I'm getting the calls in, in Wellington, like we're talking about here in Ashford for, for distribution facilities. People are looking for sites. It is basically a mad dash to find the sites that will support it and and get them sighted in East Windsor. They just lost 12, 300,000 square feet, Amazon to, to another town because they couldn't get it up fast enough. And that's not meant to make you feel rushed. It's meant to just show you kind of where the market is right now. But I agree with you that you're not going to see a truck stop showing up in Ashford with two just down the street in Wellington. There's not enough traffic on 84 for that.
Can I, can I just say, I don't think we have to talk specifics to come to a, a conclusion about what is our vision for this area? And, you know, the, the people who wrote the regs previously had a vision and had thoughts about how the area would fit into the P O C D. And I think that's what we need to think about. What, what do we want this to look like? How does it fit in to, as Jeff said, balancing the P O C D and how people feel about our, our town with economic development and, and the needs for today? I don't think it's our job to guarantee this guy is going to be able to sell his land, but it would be nice to have some tax help, but I think it's really important to, to keep in mind the values of our town and how we want our town to look.
What I would propose is that we move, or we're working on, next item on the agenda is to talk about the zoning map. As far as working on the next parts of the land use regulations, I don't think it's, it's conceivable to, or practical to work on the interstate without working on the commercial. I would say that we should put on the front burner, working on revisions to both the commercial and the interstate is our next go around on revising the land use regulations. I would even propose making that a motion if we'd like to.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to deal with the item at hand before we motion on what we're working on next.
Yeah, well, I, I I think approving what they've asked in a vacuum is
Sorry, go ahead, Dick, I missed that.
I think approving what they've asked for in a vacuum without looking at the entire section is a mistake. I think we should look at the entire section. And I don't think you can look at the interstate area without looking at the commercial because all of the permitted uses and issues in the commercial are included as special permitted uses in the interstate. So they're, they're intrinsically related. So the two have to be addressed in, you know, in tandem. They're much, much less complicated than what we did with the residential agricultural sections. And I don't think it's, if, if we give him a positive indication that we are entertaining what he wants to do and would be semi-positive towards it, but we want to look at the entire thing. I think it gives him a marketing advantage, but I don't think approving the details of what he's asked for is the right thing to do right now.
Mike, what's our, what's our status on this, that we continued the hearing? And we're making any movement now or I, I wanted to be in good faith, I just didn't want to delay the guy, but you know, if we were going to look at this deeper, but you know, we need to make, we need to make some movement on this, obviously in a timeframe.
Yeah, so you, you do have the timeframes ticking away. You have time to get to the next meeting, but really, I mean, he's not here right now, so I don't, I think the conversations should just wait till the next meeting. He doesn't have the benefit of having heard any of this. I, again, I, I really, I really think that, that the commission's got to think about the application at hand and think about what, what your thoughts are about this. I don't think, and again, this is my opinion, but I, I don't know how appropriate it is to say we're going to deny this application because we want to look at this section and everything else. So come back to us in a year when we've gotten that done. I, I think that's a bit tricky. Granted, this is the greatest discretion that you will ever have over an application is a text amendment. But I think that the, the, the decision needs to be whether or not what he's asking for is appropriate. Whether or not the use chain, you know, the, the tweaking of the uses and the, and the, and the size, that's the question at hand. It's either the proposal is, is appropriate and makes sense or not. I don't, I, I'm uneasy about this discussion from a regulatory or, or legal perspective on, well, we want to consider other things, so let's, let's hold this or deny you and then come back to us. But we think it might be a positive, you know, thought down the road. So, you know, that's a, that's something you can kind of bank on later. I think you really have to focus on what's here and if it's appropriate. And if after you make a decision, you want to make other tweaks, we can do that. But there's no, I think you've got to kind of
No, I, I fully understand what you're saying. Yeah, and to not so much give false hope as it is to, as you, I, I think you used the term hang your hat on or something like that, or, you know, that we, we make a decision on the information we have at hand, the, how we feel about its input with the P O C D or whatever the reason is for accepting, not accepting, nothing's pre-qualified here, accepting or not accepting the application and approving it or rejecting it. And then we move on with our business from there. We can't say things that make him feel that we're good guys or anything like this and that he has a chance down the road or something like that, just because we are going to be looking at it and there's no guarantees in there.
And you also don't want him to have to be at, at the sort of waiting if, if he says, okay, well, they might make the adjustments. I mean, how long did it take to do the reg updates before? That could be, it's a small section, but it could be six months to a year and, you know, from his perspective, he's got two options, right? If you approve it, then he can seek a tenant. If you deny it, he can either go to Plan B or he can appeal your decision and say, I don't think they did it properly or I don't agree and I'm going to go to court. So the third, there isn't no third option that says, wait and see what they do. You know, he has two options with that decision and, and so I think that that's something the commission should consider. But the hearing's still open and maybe he'll bring more to the table. I, I think, you know, for now, we should leave it here because, because he's not here to benefit from these thoughts.
Maybe there's a middle ground. The biggest change he's asking for is to increase the size of the facility. If we were to make that one change and then go back and look at everything else. I don't know if everyone has
That's, that's, that's the change I have the biggest problem with right now.
Well, that's, that's the, that's the, the biggest thing he's asking for, okay?
Well, the other big thing, the other big thing is adding, you know, a statement, a special permitted use of warehousing and just, or what is it, warehousing and freight. I mean, would it be okay if that were on a smaller scale? Or the scale that we have currently identified of no greater than 250,000 square feet? Would that change be acceptable? And we heard from, and I know he's still on, we've heard from Tony Patikio, previous member of the board and that it was a conscious deliberate decision to not put that in. And not a matter of an oversight or anything like that. You know, you're talking 24-hour, you're talking the lights, you're talking all of that stuff for a distribution site along those lines.
Well, this is Mark Schnobel. He's also asking for the side and the rear setback. I mean, the way our current regs read, you're at that 200 front and side setback at a 30,000 square foot facility. So, and, and I think that's, you know, very limiting for a large warehouse structure. You know, you're, you're talking 800 feet between the two sides. That's a lot of land mass. So I think it's, you know, his proposal, you know, significant, significantly increase the size of the building allowed on the given lot size at 10, you know, at 10 feet for every 10,000, where we're at 10 feet for every thousand square feet right now, which again, I'm, I'm new to the board, but that seems very restrictive if you're looking for industrial applications.
And Mark, if you read the footnote that's with all that, it gives when a specific application is made, it gives the board the ability to modify all of that.
Well, no, I, I agree, but I, I think from, from a corporate standpoint, you're, you're looking at towns that are going to have less loop, you know, less hurdles you have to jump through initially than, than hoping that, that a town's going to approve. You know, I, I agree from a marketing standpoint, you know, to look at our current regs, I'd look at that and say, no, let's move on to another town. You know, there's, there's too many hurdles we have to to surpass.
You know, I, I can empathize with the landowners' issues. With my other hat, with economic development, we've met with them at least three, four times over the past five, 10 years. And we've gone over all the different things they've tried to put in there and nothing has stuck. It's, they've, they've the one thing that we did stand up strongly against was that wind farm. And he didn't quite say the, the right words, but it didn't go. The biggest reason it didn't go is because the FAA, the wind turbines would be above the legal limit for the FAA in that traffic corridor. So there was no way you could put it in there. But, you know, he said to me, he says, why are you fighting everything we're trying to do? We're trying to just, you know, build something in the town. And I said, we're not fighting, we just want to make sure the right thing goes into the town. And that comes back to the point, what exactly is being proposed? And we don't have what's being proposed, so. I, I, I'm not sure how we accept everything he's asking for because in its context, you know, the setbacks and things, there's no, there's no way to evaluate that. The only thing that is Jeff said that is of concern is the size of the facility. But you, the size of the facility wouldn't matter if it's hidden from view. I tried to calculate how big the FedEx facility is and it's probably 300, 400,000 square feet. And you can't see anything from the street. It's all hidden. So you, you could do the similar thing, you know, at exit 72. It's not like you're going to see it. Because if they're going to put that kind of facility on, you know, 97,000 acres of land, you know, it's not going to take up that much of the space.
Dick, this is Jeff. I hear what you're saying about, you know, what you can see from the road and, and, you know, the aesthetics of a facility like that. But I think that's the least of the impact that it's going to have to that area. And we got to look more at, you know, the traffic, the truck traffic going down 89, past the school, the litter, the garbage that I mentioned before, and, and the transient, the transient traffic that's going to bring into our town. They could build a, a beautiful facility aesthetically, but if the people that are going in and out of it, you know, that is what we want in this town, then it doesn't matter what the building looks like or if you could see it or not.
And for that matter, you get into, you know, I'm not saying the snowy owl is parked in there or anything, but you get into your wildlife issues, you get into light pollution, you know, in the evening, if it's a 20-hour, 4-hour facility and things like this, we're talking about the the dark corner or quiet corner and stuff. So as Jeff said, there are other impacts besides just the, your line of sight and seeing the building itself.
And, and I, and I'd like to say, even though the highway is in between, it's still only, I think a mile and a half from people living in the Lake Chaffey area.
Yeah, and there's
Someone say something?
The noise pollution and the air pollution from the trucks.
And, and a 24-hour light pollution. I, I would, I would not be in favor of approving this application if we had to vote on the application at this time.
I think, I think it's a, this is Mark Schnobel again. I, I think it's a matter of whether you really want development in that area or you don't. I would have to agree with the applicant that our current zoning laws are are fairly restrictive if we're, if we're looking for a large operation to move into town. I don't think it's conducive to any large organization looking at moving to our town. Small. And, and I mean, how, how long has it been zoned for industrial where, where nothing's occurred? I don't see with the current regulations, I don't see that changing in the future. So I think if we leave it as is, it's just never going to get developed.
All right, so we're not going to be moving to make any decision this evening, obviously. Mike, you're going to be getting some information from them? Are you going to disseminate that to Alex to give out to the board beforehand?
If it's, yeah, if it's something that needs to be reviewed, we can include it with the distribution for the next agenda packet. If it's, if it's material that, that is more presentable, then, then Greg may elect to present it to the commission, but what, depending on what I get from the assessor, it might, you know, as far as, as just the values and that type of thing. Yeah, it will go out with the next agenda.
Could I, as opposed to me making the call? Could I, as opposed to me making the call, I could make the call if you want. Also, could you reach out to Uxbridge? Regarding what they have going on up there?
What do you, what kind of information would you, we look, what do you want me to get? Or what do you, you know, what are you interested in?
I, I guess we're looking at the scope, size of the facilities they're talking about, number of tenants or whatever, or applications they've had. And, um, any pushback or feedback they've gotten from the public?
Are you, okay, are you more interested in, cause I can, I mean, there are facilities such as this that are nearby that I, are you more interested in knowing based on the things he's developed or for the, uh, something of the same use?
Uh, same, I'm, I'm not looking to get, get into his business and what he's done in the past or anything. I'm not looking for a, um, uh, background check. I'm just looking for, you know, he mentioned at Uxbridge a couple of times and was willing to show some pictures. But if you know, you know, other things that you can get your hands on easily to help us, that'd be great.
Okay. The pluses and the minuses of the effects on the town. You know, the good and bad things that have happened since these buildings have gone in.
I think it depends on who you talk to.
I'll see what I can come up with.
Great, thank you. All right. So, uh, I'm going to say we, uh, obviously we're going to be continuing the hearing for next meeting. So we'll have more discussion on this, more information to come. Parliamentarian, do I need to table this or postpone it or anything, or we just move on? We just move on. Okay. All right. So discussion on the zoning map update. Uh, I don't know if Mike or, uh, Richard, which to lead, wish to lead this discussion. Mike, do you want to give your input first?
Can it, can I, can I propose a three minute break?
Why, why, why sure? Well, our, our options are we can, we can break or we can postpone until next meeting.
No, no, I, I was, I'm just looking for a three minute break and sitting here for, uh, hour and a half.
I can get through mine in two minutes because I actually don't have much to report, but it's, I can deal with either.
Okay, we'll, we'll hold my legs together and we'll.
We're not watching, Dick. You're not on camera.
Turn your mic off. So I, here's where we are in, um, I think that, that because of the regulatory stuff, the way that we need to do this. We really, we've talked about the Lake District regs and then we've talked about the zoning map update. I think we really need to focus on the Lake District stuff first, because that involves both, both text changes and map changes. The reason why that's most important is because the text change needs to get to general code. Cause remember how we had that fire drill to get the regs done for the codification? I need to get that to them as soon as we have it, if we have it, um, so that they can include it. So my, my suggestions here and I, um, in keeping true to my, my, uh, two minute explanation, um, I put together just a quick literal, literally two, two second thing here. Hopefully you can see my screen. But basically things that we need to kind of go over with the Ashford's Lake Districts. And, and I started putting up a couple of quick thoughts about the goals, um, that we want to allow for some, uh, not development, but some improvement to these lake district areas. And I started looking at various towns. The towns of Killingley, the town of Salisbury and Marlboro all have lake district regulations. Some of which are, if you go back to Killingley, very short, and this is just a snippet. And then if you go to Marlboro, it's about 30 pages. But the long and short of it is, I think there's some things that we need to consider. And looking at basically the bulk standards, one of the other things that I think we need to look at is water quality. That's becoming a bigger issue with septics and, and discharge into, in, into, uh, the lake. So it's kind of a long way of saying, and I'm, I'm speaking fast so that we can get through it. What I'd like to do is come up with a draft outline for the lake district first. And we can work through that and then worry about the zoning map, because that won't need to be codified and reviewed in the same way, because it's not text. And so if the commission agrees with that, I'll start billing out some thoughts for the lake district stuff. We have roughly, I have roughly 45 pages worth of comments that we got back from general code about our zoning regs. In their legal and, um, regulatory review and analysis of the document. So I need to go through all that and determine if any of their comments will require changes to the regs again. And if so, I have to come back to you so we can discuss those. So, um, I'm pretty busy with that. But I think that's what we should do as our very next step. And on top of it, we're seeing applications of the ZBA left and right, and, and really we shouldn't be. So that would also solve that problem. It's not a really appropriate use of the ZBA, but the regs are also extremely restrictive to these, these property owners. So I think it's probably the way to get some low hanging fruit out of the way. Was that two minutes, Dick? Sorry.
Yeah, Mike, I got no problem with that. Uh, but going back to the zoning map. I sent out a email that, that bounced for most folks and I sent it out in three parts. There was a couple of questions that was contained within that. You know, when could we do, you know, contiguous zones within the zoning map? And looking at, uh, I, I looked at about six or eight different towns, the ones that I could send out from Union Brooklyn. And, uh, one other, can't think of it right now, all showed similar kinds of, of contiguous zones. I also sent out to everyone a list of the spot zoning that exists as it is. And then we, Mike sent out and I sent out the results of the meeting that we had with John Filczek. I would propose that we basically implement what was in that handwritten document that, uh, Mike sent out and I sent back out and, and do that to a zoning map. There was one that was actually started by, uh, one of the fellows that worked at NCOG before John Filczek interceded. John, uh, for whatever reason, uh, insisted that the zoning map was what he had, had proposed to, to put in to the land use regulations, which included such things as the town center being, being all commercial zoning. And there'd be no, uh, uh, commercial zoning on the, uh, other side of 89 going out towards North Road. That was not the intent ever, because we've already zoned many of those properties. I'm not sure what Mike had put together, but he showed as a, uh, potential commercial zone, uh, the, uh, Boy Scout camp, which obviously can't be commercial. You know, so, you know, of all those things that I sent out to everyone, I'd, I'd say everyone look them over. Uh, it's various approaches to things. Step one, you know, uh, Mike, you've got access to the GIS system. If you could simply input what is already, uh, accepted in the spot zoning in there. And then put in the zoning that goes basically from, uh, Upton Road to 74 and 44. Some of the lots around 44 and 74, several lots down from 44 going to Warrenville. The town center is not commercial, but a, a, a town center area zone. And then going out from on 80, uh, from 89 on 44 out to North Road. Having all of that being zone commercial, that would be basically a good first step at a zoning map.
I, I have a question. Are, are we changing some residential areas to commercial? So like 44 east of 89 to the town line, there's a lot of homes there. Are they, are they being changed?
Well, looking at some, the other towns. A lot of areas are zoned commercial, even though there would be a residence in that area. It doesn't affect the residential use of that. It simply says that they could be zoned as commercial.
Well, it, it affects somebody if, if they, if they think they live in a residential area and the person next to them decides they're going to do something commercial, that they didn't realize is going to happen. I don't, I don't, I don't think we should be changing people from residential to commercial.
I think that the, uh, the easy answer is that conversation hasn't happened yet, because you guys are going to get to decide that. What you may just, what you may decide is that there isn't a zone, you know, the sort of the Goldilocks thing. The residential zone doesn't do enough for what we want, where we want to go. And the commercial zone is perhaps allows for too much development in these areas. So you may decide that needs to be a new zone and maybe it needs to be a, a 44, Route 44 corridor zone, which allows for very li- light or not intense commercial uses that really wouldn't become so an extreme next to a residential property. You know, there may need to be something new that we create, because what we have doesn't work. And that's, I think, where we were kind of headed the last meeting, kind of what I would, my notes is that if people weren't comfortable with dropping these big intense uses next to residential property, but recognize that it might be a way of keeping some of these other properties more viable. So we may have to create something new that, that we don't have yet.
I think on the phone, you had also mentioned to me, Mike, something about floating zones.
Floating zones are an option, right? So if there's certain uses that you think are appropriate, but you know, maybe in only certain areas, you can identify special development districts or floating zones. There's a lot of different ways to do it, other than just standard Euclidean zoning, which is what we have now. And I think that's a, a conversation that, you know, will take some time to figure out, using the basis of kind of what was done previously as a foundation, but you know, you can throw the whole zoning map out and start over if you want. It's totally up to you.
Well, we, we, at this point in time, we don't have a zoning map. We have. We, we have what was put into the land use regulations that was, um, I would call the John Filczek map, uh, because John insisted that it be there. And since he was in, in charge of producing this document, it was there. Then, uh, if you look at the email that I sent out to everyone, uh, Mike Gardner looked at that and says, no, we've approved all of these specific parcels have been commercial. And they're spread all over 44, 74, even up to Lake Chaffey. And therefore there is this other spot zoning map that, uh, it, it exists that are quote unquote approved. You know, commercial properties. We've got to, at, as first step, grandfather those in since they've already been approved. But instead of having spot zoning, which is not looked upon favorably by the state, we should have more general areas of zoning. And if we zone a property as potential for commercial, it doesn't mean that it is commercial. A good case in point, there's a house that's on the left hand side on 44 going towards stores, just outside of Warrenville. Uh, it's just recently sold. It was proposed to be a doctor's office, uh, not that recently. Didn't go through, but that, that is in an area that could have been commercial, but it's still residential. You know, and, and we had as an action last time we met to get the attorney to opine on whether this would be something that would be acceptable. I don't know if we had a, with everything going on, we had a chance to ask the attorney that. But, uh, just looking at these zoning in some of the adjacent towns, it looks like most of their zone is contiguous. It's, it's not spot zoning. And I'm sure there are, uh, within the towns that I sent the, uh, zoning maps out. I'm sure there are residential properties within those zones. It, it's, it's a, it's a, a, a zoning map is more of a, a map of intent rather than a financial zoning. It, it, I don't believe it affects unless someone actually builds a commercial property on a, on a, on, on a zoned area. It doesn't affect their tax assessment. You know, uh, we have to check that with the attorney, but you know, we should have something that gives an, uh, an intent of how we want the zoning in the town to proceed as opposed to these spots zoning.
The other thing I see also with these maps, and thank you, Dick, for, uh, generating the maps for, you know, looking what we're comparing to. More than, if you take the, uh, I I D C D Z out of ours, we've only got three sections. We've only got three. And then you take the technology part out, we're really dealing with what, two or three, um, sections. Or labels, if you will. Many of the other towns seem to have multiple labels or labels they've developed more recently in order to better identify, uh, new business or, uh, you know, retail zone, whatever it is. So, um, that's probably something we do need to look into. Maybe not throw up, throw out, start from scratch, but at the very least, look at expanding our mindset on our legend and what we're able to apply. I appreciate the nodding head, Mike. It makes you keep talking.
No, I agree. I, I think that, uh, you know, there's a, there have been a lot of changes to how towns deal with zoning in the last few years. And, uh, so I think that looking at how other towns are doing it and, and really having this conversation from start and not, not worrying about, you know, what NCOG did and, you know, the, the Philcheck trying to get him across the, you know, we just kind of start from square one.
Just to get an idea of what it looks like, I would recommend that we produce a map that embodies what was in that little handwritten summary of the meeting that Alex, Jeff and I had with, uh, John Filczek. If we get that as a starting point, we can then start to modify it. I'm not sure with what you put out, Mike, you had like a start area called, uh, general commercial that was on 44. And most of that area that you had on that map was, uh, the Boy Scout camp, which is obviously not going to be, you know, commercial.
I read through those notes and I, based on what I could read and what I could understand, I marked it based on that. So, you know, if you want to print that out and mark it up, if it's to the extent that you think that what I wrote was wrong, but I wrote, I read through the notes that you sent me and the changes that I made were based on my interpretation of that.
But that, you know, the big parcel that you showed, it, it, it actually is the, the Boy Scout camp.
Well, yeah, and a lot of that is because the existing, some of the existing property descriptions showed a distance, say things like a distance from, you know, this road, um, and, and you don't, nobody really does that anymore. It's all, it's either the parcels in this zone or it's not. Having zones that extend a distance from a road creates development nightmares. But like I said, you know, that area, based on my, uh, my read of it, and granted, it absolutely could have been wrong. You know, if there's adjustments that need to be made, that, that's fine. And I read through that to the extent that I, that I could, but.
So if I'm looking, if I'm looking at the map that has like dark blue commercial zone area, is that the one we're talking about right now?
Well, there was one that was, uh, done by the young fellow at NCOG. It's no longer with us. He actually tried to map out on the, the GIS, the ones that were the designated ones on our spot zoning. Yeah. He, he got some of them right, not all of them.
Okay.
Uh, not that, that, that one there is the, uh, it's one that Mike did up, uh, based on some of the Philcheck things. And the, the one with the red star there, that is primarily the, uh, Boy Scout camp. But there's another one. Is everyone had any, any, a chance to review all the things like, if you look at the one that's on the screen right now, you'll, you'll, you'll notice that, uh, the Trumpco properties and the Senior Housing Center are zoned commercial on that map, which is a- absolutely not right. You know, there's, there's no, there's no way that's commercial. We should have a town center. And the only commercial in the town center is the kind of grandfathered in Cumberland Farms area. There's no way anyone's going to approve another commercial development. There's no way anyone's going to approve another commercial development in, in Warrenville. But going, uh,
I'm kind of liking the map from nine, four, twelve.
Can you put that one up, uh, Mike?
Three hundred and seventy on kilobytes, zoning Ashford, nine, four, twelve.
Yeah, that, that's the one that was done by, uh,
Sam?
By Sam. We, we were making some pretty good progress as far as doing these things up, until John Filczek dug his heels in, and he didn't want to see any more work done, so he basically pulled Sam off of everything.
I don't think I, I don't have a nine, four, twelve.
If you look, it's like a thing I sent, part one, part two, part three.
Oh, 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 in yours.
It's all in there. And the one that you're, that Jeff's referring to, yeah, it's a, uh, Ashford zoning map, and I, and, and it shows a, a bunch of, uh, recreational areas, which includes the, the pink. Then there is a bunch of dark blue areas, which, which is the commercial zones. That was Sam's attempt to try to map out the ones that were the spot zoning. He didn't get all the way through to it, uh, but it does show, like, for instance, there's a prop, you know, there's, there's some, uh, properties up near, uh, Lake Chaffey, on the, uh, west side of, of, of eighty-nine, there's a large parcel there, that, that was zoned commercial, there's Smitty's, uh, you know, store and the package store up there, but then down in and around, uh, forty-four and seventy-four, there's a whole bunch of individual parcels that were, you know, z- zoned commercial. The more complete description is the one that is difficult for Mike to understand because you haven't lived in town for forty years, when Mike Gard- Gardner wrote all these things out. But there are that spot zoning, and if you look at the, the map, at the black and white map, that shows the, uh, the parcels we're talking about. Basically, the idea is to do away with those spots, spot zoning, and just make those general areas along those areas all commercial. And I think we can do that as a intent, and we should ask the town attorney if we can do that. But that would make it similar, so our zoning maps would look, I sent the zoning maps out to everyone for some of the surrounding towns. And if you look at the ones, like, in Bolton, it, is it all contiguous areas, they grant you, grant you have, uh, more graded areas than we do, and it's a Mike's point, maybe we can come up with, instead of, uh, commercial, we can have commercial A, commercial B, C, et cetera. But most everything.
Something, something descriptive with definitions, I think, would be, uh, great, and then an intent to use that moving forward also.
Yeah, because the idea is to let someone know what our intent is as far as zoning various parts of, of the town. It's, it's not that we've said in concrete any of this stuff, it's more of the intent. Because if someone wants to build something in those areas, they're going to have to apply for a permit or a special permit.
Right, right, or zoning change, right?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, as you go out to forty-four, uh, towards North Road, there are houses there, but someone could say, okay, I'm going to buy this house, and I'm going to put something in there. And then he, he could make it commercial, or he could keep it as a residential. It, it, but it would require going through a permitting process and approval, you know, by the commission, you know, for that to happen.
Agreed, yeah, I understand that.
So I would ask, uh, I realized there was a lot of stuff that I sent out, and maybe everyone didn't have a chance to, to look it over, but maybe kind of look it over and try to digest it, and see if you agree or disagree, then we can kind of get together. And then Doug, excuse me, Mike, i- if, since you've got the access to the GIS system, which we don't have, i- if you could try to put in place as a first cut draft, uh, a, a map that would embody what those handwritten notes were.
Or, and, and to dial way back to what, where we started, which was way more than two minutes ago for the record, the, uh, we're going to do this after we deal with the lake stuff, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because that will obviously change the map as well.
Right.
Okay.
Well, the, the lake stuff is wording, the, we, we presently do not have a zoning map.
You have a zoning map, it's just the one that was adopted a hundred years ago, but the, the, the lake did map, the Lake District will require a map change as well, because you're going to have to land those two zones.
Right.
So we're going to have to adjust those as well.
Well.
I can, I think we can work somewhat concurrently, but I think from a development, uh, writing it down, giving, uh, form and shape to it, yeah, the land, the lake areas have a priority on that, and when that comes to fruition, we can apply everything to the map we're going to use.
Yeah, because right, right now, the, the map that was published with the land use regulations back in two thousand fifteen or so, uh, says not, not for, you know, not for public use or something like that.
Draft, yeah.
Filczek one, so instead, we published in the physical copy, the spot zoning map, and that's the, uh, commercial, uh, you know, land use regulation that Michael Gardner was, uh, sharing with anyone that came by the land use office, so. And, as I said, that's a spot map, and it's not really something that is, uh, in compliance with the way we should be doing land, land zoning.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward with that, so yeah, Mike, you're going to, uh, look into the, uh, lake pieces, can you send me what you had, uh, already put together, I'd just like to look at those a bit more. The slides that you just had for tonight.
Yeah, send it to everyone, Mike.
Sure.
And, um, what was the other thing, uh, that you had, uh, sending those things? Oh, I, I would like to, um, look at, uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to try to look at the codification notes that we received. Is that something you could share with me, or is it too much to put together?
So, I can't, I, I, I think I can export, we basically have a three hundred and fifty pages of comments that the town got back, and so portions of that deal with us, we have like fourteen pages for the subdivision regs, thirty pages for the zoning regs. Some of the comments are as simple as, in this section you say P O C D, and in this section you say plan of conservation and development, you need to fix it.
Oh, jeez, did they use, did they use a voice like that, too?
Yeah, so, um, so it was, it was, I mean, it's a, it's an attorney who is, is, I mean, she literally analyzed everything, and, and it's really fascinating, but to the extent that there are, that I can export them and, and show you what the, the comments that are actually substantial beyond just word tweaking, I can try to isolate those.
Do you want me to wait for you to go through it?
Yeah, well, no, what I'll do is if I, if there are actual comments, I can, I will either screenshot them or see if I can just like print out just those pieces so that you can look at them, yeah, that shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, Mike, who's the attorney?
So it's, it's the company called General Code, they are, they're like a national company, and they, well, they have a legal analysis team. So when we codified the, um, the ordinances, they also, the reason why we were pushing to get the regs done is so that they would do the legal analysis of the regs as well. So it's their legal team, and we had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago, and got the entire document back, and we have some three hundred uh, something changes, the, the total document is a hundred and twenty-five pages of comments regarding all of our ordinances, zoning regs, subdivision regs, wetlands regs, everything.
This is not just what we changed, but everything that's existing.
This is everything in existence for the town of Ashford, anything regulatory, anywhere.
Yeah, and, and the zone, and the zoning regs were the ones that we had already changed and submitted, so.
Right, and the, so we wanted to get those through so that they would include, and, and, um, I'm seeing that it's almost ten o'clock, but one of the things that they did outline was that our definition of family is perhaps not exactly in line with some of the, uh, more, uh, mainstream ways that it's been handled, and so.
Those are the types of things, I, those are the types of things I'd be curious about, yes.
Yeah, so I'll pull, I will pull some of those more discussion-type things out for just, you know, so we can talk about it, because we have to give them a, a, an answer, we have to tell them to keep what we have, change what we have, or that we'll deal with later, we will have to make those decisions, so.
Okay.
I will work through that.
All right. Okay, thank you very much, thank you, everyone, please take the time to, uh, take a look at some of the material that Dick has sent out, and, um, you know, pick a map you like, Bolton has a lovely map, it's great colors and things like this, but I don't think that's what we want to make our decision on. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, whatever we can expand upon that we already have, that's why that map that Sam had worked on, you know, if we can work with that, make our changes, make some additions to it, I think we can have a viable document, so. Uh, moving right along, new business, none, okay. Uh, zoning officer report, if you've got anything else to say, I don't want to hear it.
I can work with that.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Uh, then adjournment, do I have a movement to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, seconded?
Seconded.
Amen.
Janet seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.